Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Can I ask all of you to remain standing for a moment of silence for the three lives that were lost tragically last week on January 11? Thank you.
Good. Oh, that's on. I'm good.
I ask for motion to approve the minutes of January 9th, 2018.
So moved second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries unanimous. We are going to move the agenda to bring up Mr. Kermit Moyer, our athletic director, for some special acknowledgements and presentations this evening to our athletes and coaches. Mr. Moyer, thank you. And first can we have a round of applause for everybody?
Test. We good? Sorry about my voice, I'm dealing with a little cold. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we're good? Okay. First of all, for President Matrician and Superintendent Wiles, I'd like to thank you guys and the board, on behalf of everyone here and the athletes, for this formal recognition this evening. And I was gonna start off by talking a little bit about our programs, and one of the first things that we want to do is talk a little bit about the scholar athlete teams. This fall, we had five of our eight varsity teams qualify as a New York State Public High School Scholar-Athlete designation. And what this simply means again, is that our team average was a 90 or above for 75% of the roster. Some of those athletes are here tonight, but before I just ask them to stand, the teams that earned a 90 or higher were the following: our boys cross-country team, boys golf, boys soccer, girls soccer, and girls tennis. Those are five varsity teams that qualified this year, and as you may remember, that last fall, we had one team qualify. So we're very proud of these athletes, these student athletes, and the work they've accomplished during the fall season.
Mr. Moyer, excuse me, as you introduce them, could you have them come up here so that they could, cameras could recognize them and the public could see them?
I would be happy to. So if you are a scholar athlete person that had a 90 or higher, if you were a student athlete that had a 90 or higher, you would be recognized, and if you would come up and stand right here in front of the camera. Many of you I caught who came in, I know Ben Pydell is on the list, Catherine Pirelli, Sophie Santiago, Reeve Perry, to name a few, Eric Wright.
And, Mr. Moyer, my understanding from you is that they'll all get their certificates and pins at the Athletic Banquet in June?
Yeah, I was gonna mention that. Thanks Superintendent Wiles. So all of these athletes, as Superintendent Wiles has shared, is at the Varsity Athletic Banquet in June, they will receive a pin and a certificate to go along with their other awards that they receive at the culmination of the school year. So these are just a few members of our athletic teams from the fall that were scholar athletes and had a 90 or higher during their athletic season. How about a round of applause? Thank you, and thank you guys for being here this evening. The next phase of the recognition is going to recognize individual athletes and coaches for their accommodation, or for their accolades that they received during the year. I hope that many of these athletes are here today. If you are an athlete, I'm gonna start with our athletes and then conclude with our two coaches of the year recipients. Ashlyn Rivera. Right over here, and I'll give you your certificate. So Ashlyn is a dual-sport athlete. She participated in field hockey and cross-country. In cross-country, she had a great season. She finished ninth at the Mid-Hall Championships. She was second at the Section 9 Class C Championships, and she is the first girl to participate from Ellenville in school history in the New York State Cross-Country Championships. We're very proud of Ashlyn. And Ashlyn finished eighth up at Wayne High School in Section 5 near Rochester, and if you get a chance to talk to her, she'll tell you it was very muddy, very cold, very wet, and really not a good day for running, but we're very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
The next program of individuals I'd like to recognize is our boys golf, and specifically Max Rodriguez, Ben Bonnetz, John Unverza, and Lucas Benton. If you're here, would you come up please? Alright, so before I talk a little bit more about Ben, Max, and John, and Lucas all qualified for the Mid-Hall Tournament this past fall. They did very well. That was their recognition for their work and effort this season. Ben also qualified and did very well. And Ben, I think if I, correct me if I'm wrong, you had a two-stroke improvement from your junior season, and you shot a 91, and I'd love to shoot a 91 someday, I don't know if I'll ever do that. And that also qualifies Ben for the Section 9 Tournament, which is in May of this spring. So congratulations to Ben on a fine golf season. The next program I'd like to recognize are our girls soccer athletes, and if Christina Torres is here, and Colleen Stevens, if you were in the audience, would you please come up? Alright, we don't have them here in attendance this evening. Colleen and Christina were both recognized by the Section 9 Girls Soccer Coaches Association as Class B All-Stars. Next up is our field hockey program, and if the following athletes are in attendance, if you would come up, that would be greatly appreciated. Jakaya Richardson, Megan Eckert, Maya Unverza, Mia Unverza, sorry, and Savannah James. Okay, these girls had a fantastic turnaround, they did a great job. They went from having, I believe, a four-win season in the fall of '16 to a winning season this year. We were the top, we were the fifth seed in the Mid-Hall League Play, and we were the second seed in the Class C Tournament, where we advanced to the semifinal round and lost to Pine Plains, who I believe was the eventual champion, right? Or no, Rhonda One, Rhonda One, okay? So these girls were recognized by the Field Hockey Coaches Association, and they were recognized as All-Stars. And I have here Savannah James was a third-team All-Star recipient. Megan was a second-team recipient. Jakaya was an honorable mention selection. And Mia Unverza represented Ellenville as a first-team selection. Congratulations to our field hockey. Next up, I'd like to recognize our boys soccer athletes, and if Justin Giuliano, who I know is in attendance, and Kirshar Biswa, if you are in attendance, would you please come Gonna talk a little bit more about boys soccer when we recognize Coach Mead, but qualified for the sectional tournament for the 12th year in a row, did some very good things, very young team, and Kirshar's a freshman, and he was named a Class B All-Star by the Section 9 Boys Soccer Coaches Association, and along, and recently was named to the Hudson Valley Sports Report Dream Team, and he earned a second-team selection. So Kirshar, congratulations. And Justin Giuliano, who's only a sophomore, did a great job for us. This is his second year on the varsity, and he was also recognized as a Class B All-Star by the Soccer Coaches Association, and the Hudson Valley Sports Report Dream Team tabbed him as a first-team selection. Okay, the final group of athletes are representing our football program, and if they're here in attendance tonight to receive their certificates and be honored, that'd be appreciated. Anthony Walton, if you're here, Edgeren George, Ray Younger, and Sean Patway. And they're all gonna help each other out. Anthony is a junior, had a great season, and, you know, produced a lot of all-purpose yards for us. Anthony was recognized by the Coaches Association as a Class C All-Star in football, a league All-Star. Our next recipient is Sean Patway, a sophomore. Again, had a tremendous season for us. Again, someone that had a lot of all-purpose yards and did a great job. Sean, you were recognized by the Football Coaches Association as also a league All-Star in Class C. Congratulations, Sean. Okay, the next athlete up is a junior, Edgeren George. Edgeren had a fantastic senior, he's one of our linemen, and this is appropriate for him. If you saw many of our games, he had a number of sacks this year, I don't know the exact number, but by the Coaches Association, recognized as a league All-Star and also a sectional All-Star, and you were also, as you well know, the Lineman of the Year, and that's a well-deserved award. And then our final recipient is a senior, Ray Younger. Ray had a fantastic season, he was a defensive back. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ray had seven interceptions? Is that accurate? And that, I believe, is a school record, right? Okay, congratulations. He's recognized by the Coaches Association now as a section and a league All-Star, so great job, Ray. Alright, congratulations to our student athletes who earned recognition for their participation and their highlights for the season. The next two awards or recognitions are gonna be for our two coaches. I'd like to call up first Mr. Dan Kavanaugh, our varsity football coach. So Dan was recognized by not only the Coaches Association and his peers, but also by the Daily Freeman and Section9Inside.com as a Section 9 Class C Coach of the Year. Well-deserved award for Coach Kavanaugh and his staff, and I'm gonna let Coach Kavanaugh have the mic a little bit, but again, congratulations to you and your team this year on a fine season.
Just real quick, I don't wanna take up too much time here. Once again, you know, I just wanna thank everybody, but more importantly, this really is a reflection of the players, my coaching staff from the modified level all the way up to Coach Grayson, Coach Logan, and in addition to that, the parents of the players, because, you know, it really starts there at the foundation at home, and, you know, once they get in here, it just makes our life a lot easier, and we can kinda just focus on the football stuff. But, you know, once again, it's not about me, it was just, you know, it was a great season we had, and really, it was just great recognition for our community. Finally, it's been a while since we were acknowledged for football, and it's nice to hopefully be back on the map. So, once again, thank you to the parents, the community, but more importantly, the coaches, the coaches that I coach with, but most importantly, the players. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, and the final recognition of the evening, and our second Coach of the Year recognition, if Mr. Maxwell Mead, and I did see him, if he's in attendance, if he'd come Coach Mead continued to promote and foster excellent success for our boys soccer program. I'll let him talk a little bit about the team, but I know they, excuse me, qualified for the sectionals for the 12th year in a row. Coach Mead has been recognized by the Mid-Hudson Soccer Officials Association as their Coach of the Year, a very, a very nice award, and deservedly so. And also, if you did not know, we'll continue to share out that Coach Mead earned his 100th career victory as our varsity soccer coach in a victory over Coleman on October 13th of this past fall. Coach Mead, congratulations on your honors.
Just thank you for everyone. Our soccer team, when I took over here in 2006, it was my first year, and we had one win, two ties, and 13 losses. A lot of people said, "It's gonna be like that a lot, you're just, you're not gonna win with these kids, you're just not gonna win with them." So I kinda took that to heart. We worked a little bit harder in the offseason, and it's now been 12 years in a row we've made it to the postseason. It's one of the longest active streaks, next to Spack and Kill and Reinbeck, who have both won a state championship in the last 10 years, so I'm very proud of that. This year's team was one of the best teams to coach, won yellow card the entire season, very complimentary from everyone that we played. They played soccer the right way. We had some good, talented players, but they were very young. We had three seniors, one was a first-year player. The leadership out of those two seniors was tremendous, the younger guys all stepped up. This was really the embodiment of a team, so I was so proud for everything that happened to this group of guys, because they deserve everything. Thank you.
And again, in closing, I would just like to thank President Matrician and the rest of the board, along with Superintendent Wiles. I think this is a great evening to recognize our athletics program, and we look, hopefully look forward to some similar recognition events for future seasons. But again, my sincere thanks, and on behalf of our student athletes and the coaches, I'm very proud to be here, and very proud to work with and support the work of our fine student athletes and their coaches, and certainly the parents and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer, and we'd also, on behalf of the Board of Education and Superintendent Wiles, we'd like to say congratulations to all the student athletes and academic accomplishments, and certainly their athletic accomplishments, and certainly to coaches and the staff, and anybody who helps out with these athletes. As you could see, a really gifted bunch of athletes, and certainly a credit to all you parents and grandparents and significant others who are certainly mentoring them, and we appreciate that, and we really thank all of you, and please keep up the good work, and congratulations. Okay, we're going to move on with tonight's agenda. Reports, information, correspondence.
Presentation?
No, I just, well, I wanna inform the board that the presentation for special education has been moved to the budget that they'll be presenting.
Oh, okay. Jim Fuzzler?
Yeah, we realized that the second presentation was gonna take a little while, so we moved that other one.
Okay.
So, as I said, reports, information, and correspondence. On behalf of myself, I don't wanna speak for the board on this matter, but on behalf of myself, you know, certainly the events of January 11th were tragic, but I just wanted to say that while, you know, there was a lot of families and people affected by this, not lose sight on part of the work that was done, or the 30 years of service that Mr. Lopez had to this district and to this community. And for that, I will just say that on behalf of myself, he certainly, certainly, you know, not taking away from any of the events that occurred, and certainly not from the horrific acts that occurred, but he did certainly a wonderful job while he was here in the school district. He loved this school, and he loved this community. So, that's all I have for this evening. Board membership? Wait.
Alright, good. The last meeting, I had asked about Chromebooks for the, making sure that every child has a Chromebook for all the grades. Do we have a report on that, Jack?
Because of the interruptions and the schedule due to snow days, I have a conversation with Mr. Aponte tomorrow in the morning, so I'll have to update you when we have our next meeting.
Thank you.
Iris?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the Ulster County School Board Association is having a workshop for prospective school board members. I think this comes up once a year. This year, it's on Thursday, March 22nd, I believe it's in New Puls, and I think it's never too early to get people interested in the process, to see if they might be interested in being a future board member. So, I'm wondering if we could have that information put on the bulletin board, the community bulletin board on the TV, so people will be aware?
Yep, we can do that. Thanks.
Any other board number one have you heard? If not, move on to the student representative. Rham Parrot.
Hi. Um, I don't have a lot today because of all the snow days that have happened, but I would just like to say, the incident that happened on January 11th, that I realized that a lot of staff members and students were shaken up by it, but I think that Guidance did a really good job of offering support and encouraging a conversation about the events. So I just wanted to say, good job. The boys varsity JV basketball, they had a major win over Spack and Kill last Friday, and the girls were at Spack and Kill last Friday, but they lost, but that's okay. Varsity track begins their championship season next week, and because spring is around the corner, junior, the junior class and the senior class have been getting ready for their class trips. The New Vision Health class is selling goodie bags this Friday as their final push towards raising money for the Alzheimer's Association, which is supporting research and fundraising for that. So it'll be $2 and sold during lunch periods. And, there's a lot of midterms, sadly, and that's about it.
So I just wanna say, and I'm glad you brought that point up, because in sometimes in these events, I would say probably all the time, what gets overlooked is certainly the, without the cooperation and the conduct, from what I understand, the conduct of the students was exemplary under a stressful situation, and I just want you to go back to your student body and pass along, on behalf of myself as the Chief of Police, and also on behalf of this Board of Education that we recognize, and we fully are commending, you know, the conduct that you guys and girls and all your students displayed during this, during this uncertain time, and certainly during these stressful times, not knowing what was happening. So, without you cooperating, without the cooperation of the students, it wouldn't go as well for the administration, and certainly for the teachers that are in there. So, I take my hat off to you, and I'm sure the rest of the board members do as well. We certainly commend you for your conduct. Thank you very much for that.
No problem.
Superintendent Wiles?
So I'd like to begin by echoing the words of Mr. Matrician and Ms. Perry tonight about the incident. You know, I often say that we are a resilient community, and we are, and although these tragic events have left us with great, you know, a great sense of loss, I can tell you from what I've seen, everyone is working together to move forward and to support each other. I would like the board and the community to know that every Ulster County school sent counselors and staff here for a number of days as part of the Crisis Intervention Response Team, and I've sent a heartfelt thank you to all of the superintendents. We asked for some extra time and extra days, and they sent whatever we asked for. So I think it's important to recognize that the resources go deep into the county, and while our Guidance counselors did a great job, we had a lot of support from the other school districts. I'd also like to thank the students and all of the staff for their response and their feedback. We'll always review our plans, as we're doing now, and make modifications as necessary, so that we move forward and we get, fortunately, better at incidents that might occur. But really, finally, on behalf of the school district, I want to extend a very heartfelt and sincere thank you to the Ellenville Police Department for their dedication and sacrifices they make to keep this community protected. And I can tell you, working hand-in-hand with them on numerous occasions, we're blessed to have them working on our behalf, and I know this was a difficult situation, but I just thought you should know that we're very supportive of all of you. That's all I have on that topic.
Thank you.
So next Thursday, it's, I always say it's hard to believe when we start moving into budget workshops, but next Thursday, we, excuse me, Tuesday, push it off a couple of days, but it actually is Tuesday, the 30th, we'll have our first budget workshop. The governor has prepared the first run of his proposal, it's a little lighter than we anticipated, and it was presented from the governor's office in a little bit of a complicated fashion, but there's some agencies, State Aid Planning, and NISCIS and NISBA, that are trying to crunch the numbers down, so we'll have a better way to propose this and show it to you next week. I know that we had to cancel the board docs training, I know that Mrs. Doria is in the process of rescheduling it, she's looking for dates on our side and their side that are gonna work, so you'll be getting a call in the next day. We're working hard to get that scheduled. And I do just wanna comment that I know there's been a snow and other things, and we've used five of our 10 days. We'll make sure that that's posted on the website, so, we're almost at the end of January, no comments about snow days. I have to tell you, I know a lot of people have said and say, "We could've gotten in, we couldn't get in," you know, it's probably one of the most difficult decisions I have to make as a superintendent, and I don't make it in a vacuum. I get a lot of input from the Highway Department, our transportation carrier, and, you know, sometimes they're genius calls, and sometimes they're terrible calls, but we, I'm sorry, Phil, I'm gonna stop, but we just wanna keep our students, you know, and our staff safe, so that's all I have.
You do a tough job well there with that decision making.
Not always.
Well, I'll say that publicly. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Napoli.
Thank you. At the last board meeting, I was asked to provide a report on our construction capital project, that's the prologue report. I'll also let you know that there were a couple of payment applications that came in after we prepared everything for tonight's board meeting, so there will be a couple more contractors that will be paid in the next two weeks. I'm also happy to report that since we switched over to LED lights, we're actually seeing a savings in our utility bills for lighting. Our first utility bill, and the report you see right there, it's, we're looking anywhere between $800 and $1,000 a month, just in electric savings. Nothing else has changed, while it's hard to measure if it was the LED lights, but nothing has changed. As a matter of fact, some things are running even more due to the cold snap that we had. So I'm thankful that we're actually seeing the savings that we were promised, and that will be reflected in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Angela.
If I may, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting, but I had a couple questions regarding the report provided on the. on the capital project. I saw that there were several open additional cost items or change order requests, and I think that at the last meeting, the question was, when will those things be resolved and closed out? Has the construction manager provided a indication of when he or they expect to have these items closed?
Do you have a particular one, which, which page it is, and I can follow up with them? There, some of them, the clerk in the office might not, might not have updated them, so I can let you know, I can look into them.
Page second, seven, excuse me.
Page seven?
DAI 25 through 27.
Hold on, I got to get page seven, too. And which one, DAI?
DAI PCO 25 through 27.
25 to 27?
Yep, 35 to 37. Any of these, any of these listed items that say pending and/or change order?
Anyone that says pending or that doesn't say approved change order?
That's correct.
Okay. At the next job meeting or before, I can reach out to the construction manager just to find out why the report's not been updated. I do, some of these do jump out at me, so that may not have been updated back at their home office, but I'll get you more details on any of those items.
Okay, and not to heart, Mr. Napoli, it's just, I mean, I'd like to have an understanding of why it's taking so long.
Sure.
And also, another item, I'd like to know whether or not the district owns its content on social media websites, particularly YouTube. Does the district own any content created on, on the campus or at its events? The reason I ask is, there's some content on YouTube that I believe, in my, in my, in my opinion anyway, belongs to the district, and there is no district YouTube page.
So, if you're referring to somebody going to, let's say, for example, a sporting event and filming something with their cellphone and then posting it up on YouTube, that's a public event, and I don't believe we own that. We don't have any copyrights to that. Any material that comes out of the studio, I'd have to look into to see if we actually own that. If someone could reproduce it in some way legally, that I don't know. I'd have to check.
I'm more concerned with the information or the content intentionally posted on YouTube of, for instance, these board meetings, whether or not that's something the school wants to be in control of, or if we want to leave that in the hands of an independent poster. Currently, currently the...
We post it.
Okay. We don't have a YouTube page.
Well, I did ask Mr. Lukazewski to create a YouTube channel under the Allenville Central School District. I was told that that was taken care of. I didn't follow up.
We'll look into it.
Okay.
And we'll see about who owns the content of it.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Napoli.
You're welcome. All set, Mr. President?
Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Angela Bina Medina.
I don't have a report this evening.
Thank you very much. Discussion items are none, however, I will ask, Jody, where are we with the mascot?
We're going to be setting up a meeting now that we're back from break, and snow days are behind us, to see where the students are with the design. Mr. Lukazewski was going to have them start after the break with some of the designs that we had come up with to tweak them to meet our needs.
And did I not hear correctly about board docs? Where are we with that for another meeting?
We're in the process of coming up with a date. You know, we're meeting with budget, where we're just trying to get some dates that are going to work for everybody for the training. And we do, we've requested a different trainer, so we have a new trainer coming, too.
All right, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to the new resolutions for this evening. Under 8.1.1, that Casey Livingston be appointed as a long-term substitute via Trogar. School counselor at a contractual rate of $65,648, prorated Step 1 Bachelor's plus 60-plus Masters effective January 24, 2018 through June 30, 2018, unless sooner terminated.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Unanimous. 8.1.2, that Desiree Crawford be appointed substitute cafeteria monitor at a rate of $11 per hour work and substitute cleaner at a rate of $1,350 per hour work for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
It has been moved in second, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 8.1.3, that Peter Labuda be appointed uncertified substitute teacher at a rate of $95 per day work for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 8.1.4, that Charles Murray, the third, third's appointment as a long-term substitute teacher, 7/12 special education vacancy be terminated February 12, 2018, and be further resolved that he be appointed long-term substitute high school media specialist at a contractual rate of $64,755. Step 1, Bachelor's plus 54-plus Masters effective February 12, 2018 through June 30, 2018, unless sooner, sooner terminated.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Mr. Burns?
Yes, Madam Superintendent, I just wanted to ask why we're going with February 12th, how we came with that date, because as you know, we haven't had anybody, so...
So, Mr. Murray is currently a long-term substitute in a special ed classroom, and that teacher, we've just, at the last board meeting, we hired a teacher. She'll be starting on, I believe, February 12th. They're going to do a couple of transition days, and then we're going to transition into that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 8.1.5, that the Board of Education hereby rescinds the resolution passed by the Board on January 9, 2018, appointing Walter Ganga as substitute cleaner for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved. Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 8.1.6, that Teresa Shili be approved to work an additional 30 hours for testing at a rate of 8348 per hour work for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Moved in seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Oh, I have a second. I did have a second. You could choose, you could choose whichever one you want. Under Policy, 8.2.1.
Motion move 8.2.1.
Second.
There's a motion and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 8.3, under Budget.
Motion move 8.3.1 and 8.3.2.
Second.
Moved in seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under Education.
Motion move 8.5.1.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under Construction.
Motion move 8.6.1 and 8.6.2.
Second.
Moved in seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 8.6, under Other.
Motion move 8.7.1, 8.7.2, and 8.7.3, and with the question, is that misnumbered?
Yeah, it's misnumbered. Yeah, it's misnumbered.
Corrected in the minutes.
Yep.
Do you want me to make the motion under 8.6.0, or?
We will, we'll amend that motion to read 8.6.1, 8.6.2.
No, because the ones above are...
Excuse me, 8.7, yeah, that's correct.
The ones above are mis, mis, miscorrected.
Yep, so back to Education, it'd be 8.4.1.
Hold on, Education is 8.5, Construction is 8.6, Other is 8.7.
Construction should be 8.6.
8.3?
8.4.
Right, okay, five, yeah. So, it's been corrected, the minutes will reflect that. So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. And that is it for our resolutions for this evening. Our next meeting, mark your calendars, because we're into budget seizing, January 30th, be our first budget workshop. Sharpen those pencils, ladies and gentlemen, and...
Is there a time on that, Mr. President, or is it...
Five, I believe it's 5:30 to 8:30. Right here in this room, 5:30 to 8:30. Will be no executive session, we will report right to this room. What's that?
There's a calendar in the passion.
Okay, you'll be missing it? That's okay. All right. Training?
Training for the other campus.
Oh, for legislatures. Well, study well. Study well. We will miss you. So, sharpen those pencils and let's bring any items with us that we want to talk about to put into the budget this year, and we will discuss them at our first budget workshop. Let's hope that we can get some people for the general public to be here as well. It's a large budget, and we'd like to get as much input as we can.
And if they can't come, we'll have input, information, you know, information forms that can be accessed through the website, and they can also send us via email any concerns or questions they have.
Correct. Okay. Are there any items for discussion at the next regular meeting, which is scheduled for February 13, 2018?
Mr. President, we had discussed some engineering analysis for air conditioning in all of the schools, as well as one for air conditioning in all the schools and a second for cooling the second floors of the elementary and middle schools, some, some method of doing that.
Yes.
Just like some sort of a status report on that.
Yeah, we don't want to be into the heating season before we have some sort of...
Sure, we've asked our new Clark Patterson Lee, our new architect's firm, to take a look at that as part of the building condition survey.
Okay.
And then hopefully build that into the upcoming capital project, you know, depending on, you know, how the board chooses and which items to put into that capital project.
So, we have captured it, then?
Sorry, Willie, I didn't hear you.
We've captured it, then? We've captured it.
Working on it.
We're working on it.
We're working on it. That's a long-term fix. We've also asked...
I thought that the air conditioner were going to be putting windows for this upcoming year.
We talked about that.
We did.
And we were supposed to, we were going to get a, we'll have a report for you on how many air, more air conditioners we'll need and the cost of that.
Yeah, because we don't want to be like, you know, it's going to be 90 degrees before we know it, even though it's zero out now, so we don't want to be behind the eight ball on this.
We'll get you a list of how many we need and how much it'll cost.
And then obviously, we need that long-term fixes, Willie said. Any other items on the agenda that you wish to see on the agenda for the February 13th meeting? No? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.